To serve our community. We thank you, Lord, for the people that keep our community going, our clerk's office and city workers and police and fire departments that help keep us safe. We pray, Lord, that you grant us the wisdom to be able to guide our city into the future and the patience and diligence to see it through. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Would the clerk please call rule?
Mayor Grant.
Present.
Mrs. Carnahan. Mr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Voorhees.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Roderick.
Present.
Attorney Bars.
Present.
Mayor. Oh, sorry, junior council. Morgan Wood. Lillian Irwin. Jocelyn Barnett.
Present.
Grace Hiller.
Present.
Kate and Ashley. Mayor.
Okay, first of all, speaking of junior council members, Jocelyn Barnett has congratulations coming. Congratulations for your wrestling tournament victory. You are going to the state next week, which won the region.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You and Aubrey did a great job representing the town.
Thank you.
Really did.
Very, very good. Very proud of you. At this time, Mr. Moss and Mr. Smith, both being new council members, Mr. Smith has been sworn in already down at the courthouse, but Mr. Moss has not. So we'll go ahead and administer the oath of office to Mr. Moss. This is, he had a one-year term the last time, and now he's got a four-year term coming up ahead of him, so.
Oh, good for him.
That's three, three years they're doing.
No, we already, we already did that.
We're on three.
We're.
They're four, we're on three, and then it'll go four, so it'll be every two years.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's four.
Season four.
That way we always have somebody on the council.
We switch because they get a one-year term and then it's right.
Yeah, the one-year and the three-year was just to get us where we need to be, and then from there on out, they're the four-years.
Okay.
Do you want me to get photos here or?
Do you want to? Mr. Moss asked me to take it easy on him. Hi, Nathan Moss.
Mr. Mayor.
Do solemnly swear.
I do.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently.
Diligently.
Discharge the duties of Office of Attica City Council.
Discharge the duties of the Attica City Council.
District Three.
District Three.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And we've got some paperwork to sign here.
Welcome back again, Nathan.
Oh, it's funny, it's great to be back.
Congratulations.
Oh, well, thank you.
We could lost your chair.
No.
I believe that you were gonna move over there something close to the mayor.
I agree. I moved it because Kaylee moved all her stuff down here in this.
Oh, she did?
Yes.
That's very good for me. I hope you're not as messy as Kaylee does. Kaylee takes over all of our spaces.
He looks very clean right now.
You need your signature there.
Thank you very much.
Election of 2025 Council President. So go ahead and open up the floor for nominations for the Council President. Don't everybody talk at once.
Well, I would like to nominate Nathan Moss. I think it's show a lot of ability, and I think he would be good.
Thank you for the comments.
We have a motion or nomination? Do we have a second to that?
I don't know, do I? I can't even say, I guess that's a question. Do you second your own nomination?
Well, I don't know. Can you second your own nomination?
Huh?
No.
I don't think you could.
Okay. So Scott or Mr. Smith?
I'm an absentee.
Okay.
Being the current president of City Council, I will gladly, you know, gladly stay in my role, but I will gladly do whatever the council expects.
Yeah.
And I think in this case with Kaylee not being here and I'm abstaining, you are the tiebreaker, Mayor.
I don't know if we have a tie, but we have a vote to judge. So we don't have a second, for lack of a second. Well, let me ask you this. Would, would, would you all want to wait until next month when Kaylee is here? Would that make you guys feel better about it? Because we can put this off till next month and just leave Scott where he's at.
That's fine. I can do it, make a decision, so I, I, I'm okay with it.
Scott, you okay with that?
If it doesn't, I mean, Mayor, it's fine.
Okay, let's just table this until next month then, and we'll pick it back up. We'll put it on the agenda for next month. That's okay? Conflict of interest screening forums, I left those out in front of everybody, and I think I've already got Nathan's back here. We gotta do those every year. Dwayne had two to do because he wasn't here when we did the ones for, for last year.
Joan, I set mine down there. I'm gonna work stack that thing.
Okay, good. So here's one here too, Joanne, so there's, that should be all of them.
Okay.
Approval of minutes from the last meeting. It should have three sets of minutes, December the ninth, December sixteenth, and December the twenty-third.
I reviewed December ninth and December twenty-third and approved those as written. I was not present on December seventeenth.
Sixteenth.
I was here on the sixteenth, and I will make a motion to approve the sixteenth.
So we have a motion to approve the ninth and the twenty-third. Do we have a second on those?
I'll second. Or no, I guess I made.
Oh, seconded. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes, and we have a motion to.
Who was the second?
The second, Nathan.
And then we have a motion to approve the minutes from December the sixteenth. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second on favor?
Aye.
That passes. So all those are passed.
And we got the seventeenth on the minutes, and that was the sixteenth Monday?
Yeah, the sixteenth. Citizens petitions. Sir, you said you had something for the group tonight. This is, this is your time to shine. Please state your name.
I'm Daniel Tibbet.
Daniel Tibbet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I live on Anndale. I was trying, I can't get a house trailer put up there.
You can't get one approved, I'm sorry? A house trailer?
Yeah, they don't let me put one up there.
We don't allow house trailers in the City of Attica. Not unless they're in, not unless they're in a trailer park. The ones that are already here have been here for many, many years, are grandfathered in, but if it ever goes out, it's not coming back.
I got plus something, but I can't afford a new home.
Can't put a house trailer. You can put a modular home that sits on a.
And what's your money for?
That I can't help.
I'm a, I'm a poor person, respect, I am. Live like everybody else, got more money than I got.
That's, unless somebody else up here has a comment, that's, that's the way the ordinance is, is written in the City of Attica. We don't allow house trailers in a residential area.
Really, that's not real town up there, this little big town.
It's, it's in the city limits. It's, it was annexed in many years ago.
I can't get a house, I'm a sell, if I can't get a house up there, because I'm a poor guy, I can live what I can live.
I understand.
From my education, if, like you say, once they're gone, they're gone, what, in the trailer park outside of town, can you put a new trailer there or just?
In, in trailer parks you can, yeah, but not in a residential area.
Got you, okay. So you can't put new trailers in out there, but just not in, in a regular residential?
It's crazy.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm gonna go way out somewhere.
Is there anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. Does anybody else have any citizens petitions? Please state your name.
I was hoping we could have a conversation already about Halloween, if you want to do trick-or-treating on actual Halloween, so that I can get the community members and out.
I think that's kind of what we decided years ago, and I believe you guys want to change that amount.
Have it on Halloween?
We always, we just have it on Halloween, whenever that is, and it makes it a lot.
Looks like it's on a Friday next year or this year.
Yeah. That'd be probably.
Yeah.
Burchett, five to six, down right to eight.
I would say that.
The fourth thing might be is it's gonna be a football game.
Could be a home football game that night. We, we don't know yet, but we've not let that stop us before. Grace, were you gonna say something?
Um, yeah, there'll be a football game, so, I mean, you, the little kids won't miss out, but only the high schoolers will.
Is that, we need a motion, a second for that? Go ahead and set that date.
And that's, that's when you want it, on the Friday, the thirty-first?
I don't care.
I can make a motion to have it on the thirty-first.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, October thirty-first it is. Thank you, Lexi. Yeah, are there any committee reports? Well, let me back up. Is there anybody else that has anything for the citizens petitions tonight? Nancy, I've got you on the schedule here for a little bit later. No committee reports? Junior council, do you have any reports, concerns, anything you'd like to bring tonight? No? Still thinking wrestling, aren't you? Department heads, Mr. Swank is out. Chief Miller is actually out of town. Chief Little's not here. Mrs. Broadwater?
Boy, that was quick to get to me.
I guess one question there.
Yes, sir.
Have you talked to Chief Little at all?
I talked to him one day this week.
I was looking at our meeting, they, they were supposed to get the bids back by October, I mean, January nine.
They did, they came the other day, they kept, they all came in under budget. We only got, we only got like one or two bids, but.
I could go two.
They were, they were good bids, so it wasn't like they were out of line, so they're planning on moving forward.
Okay, I just, I just, when I was reviewing, I just wanted to see if.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good question, Scott, I didn't think it's put it on here.
And he was happy with the low bid. He was very pleased with the low bid.
Well, he was concerned about where they were gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
We all were, yeah. The way things have been going with bids.
Well, now that I don't have to, you know, wait on all the other department heads, that just gives me way more time, doesn't it? Since the three, three-minute timer doesn't apply to me.
Let's start the timer.
Start three minutes.
All right, I thought since we have a new council member that I would provide some information that would explain a little bit about the financial reports that I hand out, and also explain a little bit about the city's budgeting process. And John, I fully expect you to reach out with additional questions, but this might just give you a starting point with things to think about and, you know, a place to formulate questions. But the financial report that I hand out every single meeting or month is just the city budget and the expenses. The city budget, the city budget process begins in July, and the city budget has to be advertised by the end of August. There's a process at when it has to be advertised, how long of a period before there's a public hearing, how long of a period before the council votes on it, and then a deadline at the end of October in order to have that submitted to be approved. If you fail to meet those guidelines and you do not timely submit a budget, you will be held to the prior year's budget. You will not have a new budget. So the deadline is firm, the requirements are firm, and if you don't meet those, then you're, you're gonna continue the, the same budget as the year you're in. But I want to explain to you a little bit, because you and I had a brief conversation last week about, about funding. And municipal government funding is in silos and, or buckets, however you want to look at it. And we have about a hundred different buckets where money is. Each bucket generally has its own revenue stream, and you can't share money between buckets. And every fund, except for general, has restrictions on how that money can be spent. So for example, MVH can only be spent on roads and repairs and things like that. It cannot be used for anything other than that. But what I want to do is, if you want to look at your financial report, I'm gonna explain this a little bit. This literally is the 2025 budget. The department heads create their budgets, they review it with the mayor, provide it to me, and then it's, goes before the council. It's advertised before the council. You know, changes can be made, increases, decreases, but once that budget is approved, well, once the budget is submitted to the state, the state actually approves it. The state can cut the budget, and ours for 2024 was reduced. It was not approved as we submitted it, they actually cut some of the revenues from our budget, or not revenues, some of the expenses from our budget. So just because we set it and the council approves it does not mean that that is our budget, because it still has to be approved by the state. And the state is the know-all, be-all, they are the ones that have the final say as far as whether or not they're going to approve the budget. Now, the, the city council, you know, has the ability to determine how budgeted money is spent, but that's pretty much done when the budget's established, and that's what I'm gonna show you right now. If the council approves an expense that was not budgeted for, in order to actually spend that money, then we actually have to, we have to ask the state for permission to increase our budget to spend money that wasn't approved. Now, it's usually not an issue as long as the money is there, you know, as long as the money's there, they're going to approve it. But there are limits on how low our funds can get, and if we are spending more, if we are spending more, our budget is more, or we're asking to spend more than what we have, it'll be denied and we cannot spend it. So we are basically, you know, at the mercy of the DLGF, which is the Department of Local Government Finance, and State Board of Accounts, which is SBOA. So what you're gonna find here is, if you want to look at the first page, the top left-hand side, you're gonna see four-digit numbers, 1101. That is our general, our general fund, and it can basically be spent in any way, you know, any way the council chooses to spend the money. The second set of numbers is the department, and you will look on here and you'll see that there's multiple departments under the general fund. We've got mayor, we've got council, we've got for treasurer, office, court, fire department is no longer under general, they now have their own fund, police, public building, city inspector, public building, or board of health, plan commission, insurance and bond, community planning and development, cemetery. All of these are all within the general fund, and within each of these departments, like if you look at the mayor, mayor's department one, council's department two, CTO's department three, so that delineates, you know, what the different departments are and what their particular budget is and how much money they can spend. If you look at the last four sets of numbers, the last three, those are categories. So anything that is a one-hundred is personal services, and this is all set by the State Board of Accounts. This is not determined by us. There is an entire, entire binder of things that you have to follow and how you have to set your funds up. So all of the one-hundreds are personal services, which you can see on this, are salaries, FICA, insurance, you know, anything related to employees. There aren't any two-hundreds in the mayor, but if you go down to department three, CTO, the two-hundreds are supplies. You can see office supply, postage, official records. Three-hundreds are professional services, so you've got your travel, travel, your conferences, your consultants, things like that, and four-hundreds are your capital assets. And I think it's pretty clear, but that's the, the difference between the different categories. And we cannot, I cannot move, I can move funds from a one-hundred to a one-hundred if, you know, there's a short in one of them and one has funds.
In the general.
In, in any of them. I can move, you know, I can move funds from a one-hundred to a one-hundred, and I usually have to do that, but in order for me to move funds from a two-hundred to cover a shortfall in a one-hundred, I have to have council approval. And you cannot move funds from the general to MVH or to any other funds. The funds have to stay within their bucket, within their, within their fund. And then you can look through here, I mean, I think this is what, twenty-eight pages, twenty pages? So you get beyond the general fund, you get to 2201, which is the next one, well, you've got general rainy day investment, 2201, that there are two MVH funds, 2201, which is general, and 2203, which is restricted. But the MVH funds literally can only be spent, like I said, on things related to road repair and upkeep and maintenance. And the same thing holds, you know, holds true. You have your one-hundreds, two-hundreds, three-hundreds, and, and so on. 2202, local road and street, 2203, MVH restricted, 2204 is park. Most of these have their own revenue sources. Every separate fund has its own separate revenue source. So park has its own revenue, separate from general, separate from MVH. The majority of the revenue that funds municipalities comes in from property taxes and local income tax. Those are the ma- major sources. I mean, you have other smaller, you know, sources of revenue. We sell $25 golf cart tickets, that's revenue for the general fund, but we're not gonna run the city on golf cart tags.
Right.
So like I said, every, every fund has its own, its own revenue.
Now, are those controlled by ordinances or?
No, those are controlled by the state. It's completely controlled by the state.
Okay.
We have no control over it. They tell us what we're gonna receive. We do have the, we do have a little leeway to maybe change the tax levy from, for example, if park isn't getting enough money and we have enough money in general, we might be able to reduce the general tax levy and increase the park tax levy. But right now, for 2025, we're $300,000 over our revenue in the general. So we really don't have a lot of money in the general to shift over to park, but it would have to be done and approved at the state level. We can't just do that. None of that's controlled by ordinance. That is all controlled by the state.
Well, if you're, you're $300,000 over, where does that money come from? I mean.
It's coming from our cash reserves, it's coming from our savings account.
Okay, okay.
Okay, cemetery is now in the general, so it's not his own fund. The reason cemetery was moved to general is because cemetery was losing money and we were out of money in the cemetery fund, so we had to move to general to be able to sustain it. Let's see, there's, and if you do not see anything in the budget line item, that means it's either a pass-through account or there's not expenditures within that, within that fund.
Joan, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
What you just said, so you said that the cemetery was losing money, so then it was moved to the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but why?
Because the cemetery was losing money or.
They didn't have enough money.
Cemetery is not a moneymaker.
And cemetery had its own tax revenue, it just wasn't, we weren't getting enough revenue off of it.
Oh, okay.
In addition to what, you know, the sales.
So it's still losing money, but it's just in another, in the general?
It's in the general fund, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So does it make the, ask the question, is there any way to fix it from losing money?
Probably not, because the cost of running the separate cemetery, unless the Moss family wants to purchase it, we've offered, or even accept it, we've offered to give it to them time and time again, but they keep, you know, saying no thank you.
If you're in a larger city. Just pass a new ordinance, what, this summer? And we raised the rates to be more competitive with other municipalities that run cemeteries around the state. We looked at several of them and, and kinda tried to strike a balance there, but even then, it's extremely hard to make enough money off cemetery to keep it going. It's more of a, it's more of a community service than it is a.
What, what kind of loss are, are we talking about?
I don't have those figures in front of me, and, and, you know, right now, i- it's not a loss now because it's in the general fund. I mean, I can tell you what the revenues were from it, you know, the revenues now are not gonna be from its own tax rate, they're just gonna be for cemetery lot sales, because we did away with the separate cemetery tax rate and we increased the general to, you know, accommodate that. But, I mean, that's not information, because it's all lumped into the general now, and it's under the general revenues.
We could go back and look at, at, before we did that, see what it was.
Right. So it's not really like 22.
Unfortunately, I, I have to be kind of brought up to speed, so maybe I need to just visit with you on.
Right, 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 right.
And not take the time right now.
That's okay. But if there is not anything in the budget line item, then that is not a budgeted fund, and we don't anticipate any expenses coming out of that fund.
So Joan, just another quick question.
Sure.
I, I was at one of the city council meetings when Paulson Claus came in, and they were asking for like $38,000. Okay, where would I find that one at?
You are gonna find that back under, let me see, it's not community development. You're gonna find that under the general on page four, department nine, board of health, contractual services. $45,000 is budgeted in there, but that's not just for Paulson Claus, there are other things that come out of that line item. But that is the line item. It would be 1101, oh, oh, nine, four, three, six, three. That is where that will be paid out of.
I have a question too while we're talking about it, but I know years ago we set a ceiling for what we could pay Baker Kelly each year, and where would we find that on here? Because the council, when I was mayor, had budgeted one to 20,000 a year a cap, and I've never really seen a review each year of what we paid on that.
It, it depends on what it's being paid for. They actually come out of a lot of different funds across the board, depending on, for example, when we're paying them for the financial plan, then that's gonna come out of water, sewer, stormwater, general, park, it's gonna, it's gonna be divided up and come out among, across a lot of different things.
Is there a way to give us a report, maybe next meeting, just to show us each year what we've been paying Baker Kelly as a, as a group overall?
We can show you what their invoices are.
Well, yeah, just a total of their invoices, that'd be good, because.
Yeah.
I just want to see how close we are, because I know at one time we had set a, a limit on what we pay, and I don't think we've ever reviewed that, so that's.
Sure, that's easy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
With their billable rates, I think that'll be a crazy number.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, if there's no questions, we'll go ahead and, do you have anything?
I guess.
Yeah, I do, actually.
I have one question, I guess, I'm not trying to jump ahead, Mayor, but I see at ordinance here where we made a typo on the police officer salaries.
Yeah, I've got it on here.
When I look at our financials, that's not the numbers that are on.
That has nothing to do with that, Scott. The salary ordinance, the totals at the end, including the years of service, was calculated out with the 4.5, and then when the council changed their raise to six, it just didn't get calculated at the six. So the salary ordinance, what they're being paid is the correct amount, but Attorney Bars stated that we had to reflect the correct totals in the salary ordinance, and that's what that is.
Okay.
So the, the amount that is budgeted should reflect the correct amount that.
I just was curious, when I'm looking here and I see APD chief, and then I see we didn't budget enough and, you know.
Well, and you'll also notice under 2240, public safety, there's also police salaries out of there. Typically what happens is the chief pays the salaries out of 1101 for a portion of the year, usually three-fourths of the year, and depending on overtime and depending on a lot of different factors, I mean, that wouldn't affect the chief, but I guess it would, he gets paid overtime too. Depending on, you know, where they're falling, then those expenses or those salaries are then paid out of 2240, which is public safety. And he basically, you know, says, hey, we need to switch us over to public safety now, we're out of money.
Got it, thank you. So just, since I'm doing everything.
Sure.
Joanne Hood.
You get a free pass, since after this meeting, you do not get a free pass.
Many questions you want.
Well, okay, so since this, so since this is a budget and it's the first time that, you know, we've seen it for twenty twenty-five, would you have a top ten hit list on where we could save some money? Because clearly, you know everything about a hundred accounts.
You need to listen to this guy, Scott.
And so, maybe, maybe you could give us some guidance as, as a council to see where we may save some money? Because you see it every day, you know, and we're just in here once a month.
Right, right. Health insurance is, is one where, where we can save money. Up until this year, we have basically been just throwing a dart at the wall, trying to figure out how much to budget, because our renewals didn't come in until November. And if you remember from a few minutes ago, the budget process starts in July and has to be finalized by the end of October. So never since I've been here have we ever had renewal numbers on our health insurance. The mayor's initiative, this summer, we have changed insurance companies and we've gone with what's called an AIM Medical Trust. AIM stands for Accelerating Indiana Municipalities. And we now have a risk pool of over thirty thousand members, where before we had a risk pool of eighteen. And when you have a high number, you know, high dollar claims, then your premiums increase substantially. If we would have stayed with that plan, the premium increase would have been twen- almost twenty-five percent, it would have been over twenty-four percent. And it's gone up, last year it was sixteen point seven, the year before that it was almost thirteen. So because of that, we had no ability to accurately budget. So in order to have enough money, the health insurance has been padded. So moving forward, after joining the AIM Medical Trust and spreading out our risk pool, we will know before August first every year what our premiums are going to be for the following year. And the reason for that is, is because they work only with municipalities, the trust is designed for municipalities. And then that'll give us the, the ability to actually budget accurately in our health insurance. And that's one of the biggest, one of the biggest costs, if you will, and not really knowing what that target premium was going to be and time to incorporate that accurately in the budget has created a real problem with that. Yes, Scott? Oh, you just had this look on your face like you were going to ask a question.
Okay, I guess.
So that, that, that's one of them, and I can tell you.
Well, I wasn't asking for all of them right now, but, you know, if that's something that you would want to bubble up to the council, I think that, you know, if we can save some money in our budget.
Sure, sure.
Things like that, that would be great to talk about.
I, I will tell you, and the fire department is a non-issue, because it's now fire territory and they have their own tax rate and their own revenue stream, even though the, the city manages that, we pay their bills. But the fire territory and the fire territory board actually sets their budget. So the fire department is removed from this. But the other department heads do a really good job of managing their budget. The problem is, is, you know, we've had this large capital expense that has been going on that has been all over the place and there seems to have been overruns and we're, we're drawing down our capital assets. I think once we get that major project complete and we're not spending out, you know, two and a half million dollars, you know, here and there across multiple budget cycles, it'll be a lot easier to see exactly where we're at. And somewhat to answer that question, the mayor and I just had a conference call with Baker Kelly, was it Friday? Thursday or Friday last week, where we went over the current updated financial plan. And we're going to be, you know, in the red for a couple of years through, I know, at least twenty twenty-six, just with the capital expenditures that are anticipated. However, our budget and our funds are looking a lot better in twenty twenty-seven.
Starts to go up.
Yeah, in twenty twenty-seven.
Revenues go up.
Expenses go down in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
And that'll be information that's shared with everybody.
You know, just, just little things, John, you know, we, we, just this last year had Duke Energy come through, change all of our streetlights out to LEDs. That almost cut our street lighting costs in half.
Wow, that's great.
From what it was, and, and they're brighter and use a lot less energy. So that, you know, just small things like that add up.
Did we have to pay for that?
No, no, actually, they gave us eight thousand dollars in a, in a rebate to do it. So it was a, it was a win-win to get that done. You know, just, like I said, just little things like that add up.
Speaking of Duke, so you, Larry, you and I were talking about Duke Energy when, I think it affected the school, when they were actually working on.
Had a contractor out there working.
Yeah, they had a contractor and actually lost power at the school, I think.
For, yeah, several hours.
For several hours? And was that ever followed up on?
I spoke with our Duke representative that same day and they spoke to the contractor and told them that, because contractor was going out telling people that your power could be out during these outages for up to eight hours. And I called and said, look, I said, it's twenty degrees outside, we don't want you shutting people's power off within the city for eight hours. I said, you know, ten or fifteen minutes is one thing, but we've got people that need heat and they're on oxygen and all sorts of things. And I said, that's just not acceptable, and they agreed and said they wouldn't let that happen again.
But it, but it did happen.
Obviously, things happen and.
My power was out about six hours.
This was a snafu on the, on the contractors end. They didn't intend to do it, but that, they did it nonetheless.
So did they, did they feel any heat to make some changes or?
Well, I, I think they did.
Okay, because obviously, when it affects the school, that's a, that's a.
That was huge.
That's a big no-no.
Yeah.
So.
Our power flickers every time it snows and every time it rains and every time it storms.
That's wild, yeah.
Our power just flickers, so it may not have been fully on that.
Well, I think in that moment, it, it was less more, it went off.
It was the same day mine was out, it was on them.
So that it, Joanne?
Um, let me, let me look at my notes here, how much more time can I take?
Not much.
Okay, I'm done then. Unless there's any additional questions?
I've got the Wega report on here, Mr. O'Bannon is not here tonight, so go ahead and skip past that to unfinished business. I think in the, maybe the November meeting, we talked extensively about the pickleball courts and our funding commitment. I think the number from the bond issue that we had, we, we landed on a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and we tabled that until the December meeting and then never brought it back up in the December meeting. So pickleball court group that, that's working on fundraising for this, they're hitting it pretty hard right now. But they would kind of like to know for sure where the city stands on that and we're going to stand behind that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar commitment. So I would like to be able to give them a solid yay or nay here.
Think we were going to use that as a match for any grants or funds that they were.
And, and they are going out for funds and gra- and grants, but they need to know that they're going to get that.
I can, I can read a text from Bart Foster, if that's okay.
Yeah.
She said, "We have developed a pickleball chairperson and we are committed to moving forward. We are actively seeking biz, looking for grants, we have developed court-measured dimensional prints. We have had one meeting with Dale White and Tuesday I have a meeting scheduled with Duke. We are counting on the city to partner and promote Attica Pickleball." That was from her.
And I, I did provide some information, Nancy can speak to this, to the part, at the park board meeting last week of a resource that they might be able to use for crown, crowdfunding with matching funds from the state.
Well, Joanne, where, where would the money come from for this?
We, we have, we have a, a bond that we took out some time ago to do some work down at the riverfront park. And part of that was pickleball courts. We've kind of pulled back on that due to cost overruns and estimated cost overruns. And we've been talking to the pickleball folks, for lack of a better term, about locating that up in Ravine Park rather than down at the riverfront. It just makes a lot more sense to have it up there. And as you might know, I've been working with folks for Pool Board. It's called Attica Recreation, Inc., and they're working on fundraising for a pool or a splash pad and to revamp the building up in Ravine Park that, that's by the pool. The thought was that if the pickleball court was in, or courts were in close proximity to that building, that we could utilize that building not only for pool, but for the park in general. The bathrooms up there are in bad shape, they're over in the pavilion and, and not the best. And we could have some nice bathrooms over there perhaps and, and, and make that a nice area up there. But I, I guess all I'm asking tonight is that, that we verify that we indeed are committed to giving them the, the money that we talked about.
Well, I thought we agreed to that, we agreed to fifteen thousand for the dog park and then we agreed to, I forget them, not for the, for the park equipment. So I thought we approved that and I said.
I went back in the meetings minutes and so did Joanne, I couldn't find it, Scott.
We, we did, I mean, it was talked about, but I don't believe there was a vote on it.
I remember, I remember the conversation.
Yeah, and it was there, yeah.
Trust me.
Yeah, it was there, the conversation was there.
Do you remember, did you review, do you remember the amount for the park equipment?
Um, I don't remember the amount for the park equipment, I was thinking it was a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and twenty-five for pickleball and fifteen for dog park.
Which left some overage that we were talking about.
A little bit, which part of that's going to be used for the generator and there were some other things that those funds were going to be used for.
Lighting, I think we spoke of, you know, downtown.
Yes, yeah, so that, yeah, yeah.
So out of that bond that was issued, how much money is available?
It'll be on here, it's in the financials.
Three?
No, it's with that, so.
Five hundred and fifty something.
Left.
Well, this'll, this isn't going to show the amount left, I'll show you the amount budgeted. I misspoke, it won't show you the total amount still in there, but it's, it's high five hundreds, we haven't spent anything.
I wanted to say around five fifty.
Yeah, the only, John, the only money we've spent on that is just for the professional services with, you know.
HWC did all that engineering down at the riverfront, but I won't say it won't be used, but we haven't acted on it yet.
I mean, HWC put together, that's the engineering firm that the city uses, yes ma'am.
Right, so the money was of the bond was taken out for the park at the riverfront. They want the money to put their pool courts at.
Yeah, instead of building the pickleball courts down at the riverfront, we want to build them up at Ravine Park.
That was a suggestion from us, we want, we prefer.
I, I, well, I remember.
You must have been at that meeting.
I was too, I was too.
Fun times.
But the money's still coming from the same bond that's made for the riverfront.
Yes.
Yeah.
The riverfront was the original project that the city wanted to enhance the riverfront, but the cost estimates were more than the bond. So it really limited the ability to do anything down there because of the nature of the, the ground and where it was at.
Kept having to take things out of it to make other things more affordable and, and we got down to where it was.
The park board had just went through doing a survey of what priorities were for the citizens of Attica, because, you know, we had amphitheater, we had dog park, we had all these things on here. The bond list was way bigger, so then we took away of what can we do with the money we've got that's best for the citizens.
Yeah, use it most efficiently. And, you know, instead of having to do all of the groundwork and spending money on that to prepare the riverfront for the pickleball courts, the, there was land that would need very little done on it, so it would be cost savings and more of the funds could go to build the pickleball courts versus the engineering to make it feasible.
So if, if it moves to Ravine Park, then do we need a hundred and twenty-five or can it be less money?
Actually, they need about five hundred thousand.
Oh, geez.
It's not, it's not dirt cheap.
Matching whatever grants or money they, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think is what we were talking about.
Oh, I see, okay, there.
Well, they.
I'm sorry.
You made it.
Cindy Mason.
I just wanted to say, when I was here with the pickleball group presented their request, the original one was for like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and because the, the original grant for down there was like the five hundred. And it was talked about and I was under the impression that the city would said, no, you know, we can do a hundred and twenty-five. That's my recollection.
Nancy might remember too, here we hear, does that sound right, two hundred and fifty?
That's what she gets asked.
Originally, and then we, we moved forward to one twenty-five and then they come from another meeting and they wanted three hundred thousand. And now the number is five hundred thousand to do it?
I guess it's three hundred, I missed, I may have misspoken.
I, I would like to add that I'm also working with Lafayette Parks Department. I'm on their committee up there for survivor of the tournament, they do, I've done that for three years. And so they're building on new pickleball courts now. So they have offered to give us, because they're doing everything new, they don't want any of the old stuff. And so they're doing everything new, so they've offered us benches and nets and holes. So we're going to save some money there, all we need to do is, we need to just get you guys in order to help us to get it going. So we need to get it started and we can't get it started without, we need a base to start on. So we can go to other people and say, okay, we've got this much money that's pledged by the city, we need to start here and can you help match this or can you give a little to add to this, we need something to start on.
Well, I make a motion, we stake to the hundred and twenty-five thousand we originally discussed and stay with that.
We have a motion, we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion that we approve fifteen thousand dollars of that same bond for the dog park so we can proceed.
I'll second, I'll second that.
So, John, you didn't vote on the original?
I'm staying out of that one, yeah, for now. And I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the park board for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of park equipment for Wollish Park.
Do we make that all in motion, yes?
Well, since it's two of us, but.
I, I, I've got one question not to get in. On the dog park, can the dog park be put with the pickleball court at the same time in Ravine Park?
It's going to go on the other side, I think of the pool, I think that's what we were talking about originally.
Was it?
The dog parks.
The dog parks.
The dog parks.
Oh, it's going down there, okay.
Yeah, we want, they wanted to be separate, because we had some problems with kids being on the courts, some things over here that they have, there's been some things going on.
And a lot of people walk around the river.
That to be separate and.
Well, I can tell you that there's some citizens in my zone that I've heard about the dog park. It's like, how hard is it to put together the dog park, we want it? And so I know that there's, I, I know the pickleball, the pickleball people are important and they want that, but I know that the people also want to be able to walk their dogs and so this has been something that's bubbled up.
We just have a motion for fifteen thousand dollars for a dog park.
Okay.
Was there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Have the motion a second? All in favor for fifteen thousand dollars for both dog parks?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay.
And John voted.
Well, fifteen thousand's a lot easier to vote on, you know?
Scott had a motion for the.
Dog park and for.
No, for the equipment.
Playground equipment.
Playground equipment, we agree for playground and I know it's not enough, but that will help us do that park dedication.
I'm sorry, hang on.
Yes, yes, for the dedication, yes, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, you're right.
Does there have to be more excavated then down there for that park?
Not a lot, no. I, I think that the plan was, when we talked about it the last time, and please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, what we talked about was buying the equipment, getting the equipment installed in there. We weren't going to put any new road sidewalks, none of that in. We were just going to get the equipment and get it installed and, and then let the city guys work from there. We weren't going to make a project out of it.
Because it, it's pretty level and ready for installing the equipment right now with what we were wanting to do.
And then Nate had some ideas on the memorial for the park down there for the kids.
Was there, was the motion that Scott made and John seconded, was that for the dog park and the play equipment?
Dog park, I did two separate motions, just because.
Okay, so.
I'll second for the play equipment.
Okay, all right, thank you. And that was one fifty?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Vote on that, you need to vote on that one yet then, right? We need to vote for the playground equipment, yes. Have a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
You abstained?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. John, you're really making me do a lot of minutes here, you know, usually just football and past.
I just, the bigger numbers, I just, if I don't feel like I know what I'm doing, I'd rather just set it out.
Nancy, did you have anything else for the group on the pickleball courts, are we good then? That, that motion passed?
Yeah, we're good, thank you, thank you, we appreciate it.
Uh, other unfinished business, some of this I can just go through pretty quickly. Rental housing inspections, we've not yet hired the part-time position building, the job description is out there, Eric has it. We've got the money allotted for that, it's a, it's an hourly rate, it was in the budget, so we're good there, we just need to.
Maybe bikes, you know.
Not that I know of, no, but we really haven't advertised it yet either, to be honest. Annexation of Harrison Hills in property south, I know Mr. Barst sent out some information to some of the property owners out there and I don't think we've heard back from them.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Discussion regarding city contribution to HSA. Discussion regarding city contribution to HSA for those in the high deductible health plans for twenty, twenty-five. Clerk did a, uh, look see at all the funds that go into our paying for our health plan. Uh, as Joanne pointed out, that, uh, that was kind of a stab in the dark, not knowing what our health costs were gonna be when we put that in the budget. Because you don't, it's like going to the grocery store and loading up your cart full of groceries and hoping you got enough money when you go through the checkout. Because you don't know until you, till you check out. So that's kind of where we were at with that. We will not be in that position next year. Uh, but it looks like that we are gonna have enough money to do the thirteen hundred dollars in HSA for each person that's in the high deductible plan for this year. Uh, I passed it on in the, in the email when I sent out the, the, uh, agenda for the meeting. I would propose that that not be paid in a lump sum, just in case somebody leaves.
Or quarterly.
For whatever. I, I'd just put it on their paycheck. It, it, it's a lot cleaner to put it on their paycheck each time, either weekly and, or bi-weekly as we move to the bi-weekly pay.
So it'd be their responsibility to move it into their HSA?
No, no, we'll send it to the HSA because we're not collecting taxes on that money. Uh, so that's, that's gotta be separate as it goes into that account. Uh, the only responsibility that the employees would have is to set up the HSA at their bank. We're not gonna set up the account for them. Uh, some have already done that. Um, but I think that it, if they have that done by April first, that's ample time to get that set up. If they want to participate, if they don't want to participate, that's fine too. They don't need to set up the account and it can just go on. But what, they won't get the thirteen hundred dollars either. So if they want that thirteen hundred dollars, they need to go set up the, the account and give that information to the clerk's office so they know where to send that money each pay.
Did we receive solid numbers on?
Yeah, we, we did not receive our premium statement for the new insurance. I don't think until December twenty-eighth.
But they, we do have all that now.
We, we do have all.
All the numbers of everybody.
Uh huh, yes, we have all, all of that information now.
Would it make anything easier for us to use one source, one bank to?
No, makes no difference at all because it's, it's an entry in every single employee's payroll, so it doesn't make any difference. Mickey created a form that's similar to the new employee enrollment form. It has all the banking information and literally it's just entered on the backend. And if it's done per pay, like the mayor is suggesting, that'll make it easier because then we don't have to do it one pay and then remember, oh gee, we're not doing it the next pay. It's just more straightforward and cleaner.
So we're gonna do it per pay period?
Per pay, per pay, per pay.
That's what I was suggesting.
It'll be a prorated amount up to the maximum that the council approves.
So now that we know that, we need a motion to proceed to put, to do that, I would assume.
And the, the cost of that's gonna be between twenty and twenty-one thousand dollars is what the cost of that's gonna be.
Did you see how many employees elected to take the insurance out of the city?
I did. I don't remember off the top of my head. I do know that there were two that opted out, three that, there were three that opted out, but one of them has requested to rejoin the plan.
I think I printed twelve, I printed fourteen insurance cards today and distributed those.
There, there were three employees that opted out.
And we've got eighteen.
Yeah, right around there.
Somebody have joined now?
They're, they're asking to.
It's kinda late, isn't it?
It is. Uh, but Aine came back and said that we had until the thirty-first. It was a, it was a like a, uh, life change event. They, they looked at it like that, like, you know, if you were insured under your wife's insurance and she dropped your insurance for some reason, then you can always go back. And so that's the way they looked at it.
Yeah, so you do that. You get married, you get divorced. I mean, it can be life changing.
And, and, you know, the, the commitment is not gonna be a firm amount. I mean, it's gonna be a firm amount, like you commit to each employee, but there could be, you know, life changes that happen throughout the year that could increase or decrease that.
We hire more people, we lose somebody.
Exactly. Or somebody hops from one insurance to another.
It's one of those card things again, you know, you never know. I mean, we're guessing.
And that's why we couldn't just take everything that was left over and divide it up and say, here's what you get, because you gotta hold some back in case.
Like I said, the commitment, you know, based on the numbers and figures we have right now, be about twenty, twenty-one thousand, right there in that neighborhood.
I think with everything else we do and the stuff we've done for downtown, I think that that's not asking much for our employees to take care of us. So I make a motion that we allocate thirteen hundred dollars per, uh, employee that has, uh, elected to take the insurance into their HSA for twenty twenty-five and we do it by payroll.
Have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Who seconded it? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. I abstain.
All in favor with one abstention. Do you want to just let us?
I really have to, so.
I know, I know. It's just funny.
We need an ordinance for that, I'm good. Okay, all right.
Uh, just a, just a quick update. Uh, I wanna update the council on, on where we're at with the progress of the ambulance relocation. I invited Scott to some of these meetings as council president, but, um, been in a couple of meetings now with local leaders, uh, industry leaders. The, uh, couple of the county folks have been up here at meetings and we've been brainstorming on where and how we could move the ambulance shed to uh, be able to afford it, um, get it on this side of the railroad tracks. What can these industries do for us, the local industry leaders? Um, you know, there, there's been offers of maybe land, there's been offers of maybe monetary, there's been offers of maybe, uh, labor to maybe finish out a building if we can get it built. So we don't know where we're at right now. Uh, I've talked to the school system about property that they may be abandoning or getting rid of. Uh, and, and there's a couple of possibilities there. Uh, I don't wanna mention specifics on where those are at in a meeting, but, uh, there, there's a couple of possibilities there that we may be able to, uh, take over a, a small building uh, in a couple of different locations and add on to it and make a, a nice ambulance shed out of that and get them moved. I, I think the group, uh, is, is really firm on trying to own something rather than lease something and revamp it, put a bunch of money into it and then still not own the building at the end of the day. So that's still moving forward. I've got another meeting scheduled the end of this month with that same group. I talked with Christie Gerald, our grant writer that we deal with a lot, uh, just this week and to ask her if there was anything available as far as grants. And there is an Oaktree grant that we can apply for. Uh, it's a matching grant. I think there's a ten percent grant, a ten percent match on that grant, but it could be up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, which would take us a long way on what we're wanting to do here. Uh, and, and I don't know that that seven, uh, the seventy-five thousand dollars would have to come out of the city coffers. That could be donations from the folks that I just talked about, uh, maybe the county, uh, maybe the, the industry leaders. So right now there's a lot of I don't knows, but that is what I do know as of today. So hopefully the next meeting, I'll have a little bit better idea of where this might be going and what might be available.
I, no, you go ahead. Um, I just quick question, uh, cause I know that there are ambulances that are private services where they're, they're owned in corporation. What, what do we have? Cause I really don't know. Is it, is it?
Fountain County runs the ambulance service in the county.
Okay.
Uh, they own the ambulances. They are actually, uh, I won't call them a not-for-profit, but they, they charge for their services. It's not free to the county people that use it. Uh, I can tell you that firsthand. I paid them quite a bit of money for a little ambulance trip last year. But, uh, they, it is operated and owned by the county.
Okay. I guess the question I have on that, Mayor, and I know I've not been able to attend all those meetings, uh, cause I know we're partnering with C and D and Badlands and Harrison's and everything else. But if we end up, you know, we went to the county and it's county's responsibility. It's a benefit to us having two ambulances here and get them on the other side of the track.
Benefit to us having one here, I mean.
Well, and, and we, you know, we have paid for that building and everything forever. And if we buy this building, you know, that's just.
I'm hoping to get it bought with the grant funds.
But if it's a matching seventy-five thousand, which you, you know, in the conversation we had with Garth and county, and there's a lot of stuff going on right now. You've been watching some of the stuff.
I'm hoping that the, the industry leaders will come up with the match. And they may even, uh, Christie will be here at the meeting, this next meeting, but I'm hoping that they would even take the ground, that the gra, that if we build a new building today or we utilize one of the buildings that the school has and add it on to it, uh, that they may take that into consideration as part of the, the match. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a, a cash match. It could be a, a.
Well, I'm just, I'm just hopeful that we're not at the point of really ever considering having our own ambulance service right now. But if we buy that building and in the future we decide to do some, you know, do something like that, then it would be our facility.
It's gonna be the city's just facility, yes.
Our fire department is first to respond and they're most of the time around here. And, uh, you know, I'm all for supporting that, but the resistance we got from the county council and commissioners and everything else over trying to do something like this, uh, you know. And we, we're just trying to take care of their employees.
The, uh, the county commissioner that, that has been up here and meeting with us and, and the person from the county council has been very supportive if, at the meetings.
I know they've had a lot of change in leadership and their flights and stuff.
I think they're kind of locked step now. I, I think that that situation's getting better, so.
Good.
So that's, that's just the update. That's just what I know. Uh, we'll move on to new business. Uh, council, I'm sorry.
He knew that during new business too.
Well, yes, will you determine who, you vote on who's going to be the local paper or the attorney and the bank?
Oh, okay.
Remember, we talked about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, Ingrid just reminded me that we need to vote on what newspaper that we're going to use for advertising our meetings and things. Uh, typically that's been the Fountain County neighbor.
That's the only option.
The, the bank is.
Fountain Trust.
Fountain Trust Bank and the attorney is obviously Barst.
Can we talk about that?
Barst Redlin.
Can we talk about that?
He'd like, I'll step down.
Barst, is it Barst Redlin or is it Barst Barst Redlin?
It's Barst and Redlin. I voted for Barst squared and I got shot down.
Congratulations to Ingrid. You're now partner.
Ingrid is now partner.
I like Barst Bridget.
There you go.
I get really creative with it, I think. It's kinda boring.
Does anybody have any other thoughts on continuing with, with that as it is or?
Not broke, don't fix it.
Okay, do we have a motion to have those three, just like I just outlined?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. That made it easy. Have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh my gosh, you all voted.
I, yeah.
Thank you.
It'd be nice.
And part of the reason we do that is that if you didn't have like the paper designated as like your legal publication, anytime you ran a notice of anything, if you didn't have that designated as your legal publication, somebody could say that you were in violation of the acts or the open door law, um, due process, all sorts of fun things. That's why you have to do that every year. Really break yourself in hot water. More important when there's more than one paper, but.
Uh, I forwarded an email to all of you, uh, state mandated a council redistricting uh, or recertification that had to be done in twenty twenty-two and we failed to do that. Uh, they've extended that date out to six thirty of twenty-five. Uh, contacted the redistricting folks, uh, for the state. And, uh, yeah, keep sliding. Uh, they're working on the maps. What I did was send them the addresses of all of our council members. And John, I sent them two addresses for you to make sure that if you move, it's not gonna change your council district and, and they think they can make that happen. But essentially, uh, if you have more than a two percent shift in any of the districts, um, per the last census, then you have to move district lines around to get back within that two percent across all the districts, uh, as far as population goes. So they're working on that. Uh, their software's been down here for a week or so and then it came up and then it went back down and they're having trouble with that. But, uh, they, they tell me that we can have this done by, uh, the day, the deadline and we'll have to pass an ordinance to, to redistrict.
How does that work if we, uh, or I'm not thinking we're gonna definitely move our annexation, you know, with, to the south.
Where we're annexing, no, you're, you're not gonna change your population much.
Right, initially we're not, so it'd be something for, you know, future census.
Future, mhm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I asked him about that. I said, what, what would that do? The other option is, and I don't think it's a good option, uh, you can make all your, uh, council seats at large. And if you did that, you could have, you could conceivably have all your council members live in one neighborhood. And I don't think that's a good idea either. So that's just an update on that. As, as more information comes in, I'll make sure to pass it along to everybody.
Just so you know, we've got the ordinance pretty much done. That way if you throw the map in there as an exhibit and pass it really fast, hit that deadline, we can do that. Just playing on that, not getting, getting the map back in a timely fashion, cause everybody is doing this.
If you'll see, I've got that on my sheet right here.
I think that comment was aimed at me because I told her to give it to you.
Oh. I, I wrote it down. It's, it's on here.
All right.
Salary ordinance amendment. Uh, we have a salary ordinance here that, uh, we had written up and we, we kinda talked a little bit about this. The, uh, salary ordinance, when it was passed, um, there was a, there was a line item out there that when I changed everything from four and a half to six percent, those were hand calculated figures, uh, that, that didn't change when I changed it from four, four and a half percent to six percent. So, uh, our attorneys caught that and said that it, it doesn't really change the bottom line, but we've gotta, we've gotta change it on the ordinance. So everybody should have a copy of that.
This is kind of just a correction.
It's a correction, yeah. But whoever makes the motion will need to sign their copy under sponsor and council member and send it this way, please.
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance twenty twenty-five zero one one three.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want any, just need one copy?
Yes.
No, I can give you mine if you want a copy of it.
That's fine. Thank you, thank you.
There you go, Joanne.
Thank you very much.
I'll check that on. Redevelopment update for shovel-ready projects. Cindy Mason, are you speaking on that?
Yes, I thought Brian was gonna be here too.
I did too, but.
Did anybody hear from him?
I haven't heard from him.
I, no, I did not.
Okay, well, I'm gonna just kinda introduce Brian and then let him talk most, but that's fine. Last year, um, the redevelopment commission decided that, one, we want to be more proactive now that we're getting a little bit of money. And we want to be proactive instead of, you know, just react to situations that are coming before us and people wanting this to be tip or whatever. And so Brian took it upon himself and came up with properties. Most of them the city owns, uh, some of them are, are maybe vacant land. But where we could help with to further the development. And Joanne and, uh, my friend, Scott.
I've never said that.
I heard so much.
Uh, we're at the meeting, when we were meeting and so speak up to if I'm leaving something out or if there's a correction that needs to be made. Uh, but it was a consensus among the group that yes, we do wanna be more active. We came up a budget, with a budget for twenty twenty-five. Um, and doing things that could help. And for example, I think Brian came up with one, two. one, two, three, four.
It's like three, two and a half pages.
Yeah, of of properties that, you know, we we could look at for future development that could be shovel-ready, that if we have a developer coming into town, this is something that we can be showing them. And we decided at the meeting last week that we really like the two hundred block because it is so central, it's so focal, that what can we do to help make that become a reality? And stuff like zoning, you know, making sure, this is just in the whole process of all the buildings, making sure that the zoning is correct for the property that, you know, if it's going to needs to be commercial, let's make sure it's commercial. All-clear letter from IDM. We said that we weren't going to do that, though, for this one property.
We've already got the all-clear.
We've got the all-clear, so we just had to get the letter.
For the two hundred block.
Right, right. The need for a conceptual drawing, utility plan, city partnership to provide water and sewer, you know, what's that going to look like, a new survey, then recording the new parcel, gather the total package, including both city master plans in the market. So we were talking about the two hundred block, but just seeing how we come together. And everybody's got an assignment to do for the next meeting, contacting, Tim's going to contact Ball State and Purdue on their architectural schools and see how they could be of help to us.
Ask what some good renderings of what, you know, what we're looking for.
Scott's going to contact KKG. Is it KKG?
KJG.
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 KJG. Brian is calling Ben. Y'all remember who Ben is?
Ben Dispenant?
I think it was Ben Dispenant.
H D M Sats.
Oh, okay, that Ben.
And then another contact, we also said that we would contact another survey company for for the potential, basically getting cost of what this would do if we got all this information. What is this going to cost the redevelopment commission? And so we just wanted to give you an update that we intend to move forward. I think it would make sense to have the planning commission involved in that since they are also involved in zoning. But I think the more people on the same page, you can save a lot of time.
Which, at this point, kind of what we looked at is if you look at what's taking place downtown, we have, you know, obviously got WIGA for the marketplace. And if you look at the other parcels, they're still, when you look at Beacon, there are four businesses that were the previous business, Napa, that went all the way back, the other, all those go all the way back through the parking lot. So this would have to be broken down and reparcelled, you know, and everything else like that to have ready. Our thoughts are, it's basically two and a half, three years remaining before we can actually develop a project. But Brian does this a lot, and eighteen to twenty-four months is no time if you if you've got it shovel-ready. So we budgeted one hundred thousand dollars out of our RDC money to take properties and get them shovel-ready because that's really attractive to a developer. So our thoughts, two hundred block is the key. If we can get that all ready, infrastructure-wise, planning, everything else done, sewer, all that stuff like that, then it would be real attractive to a developer. That's, I mean, that's our prime corner property for our city. And we wanted to make sure the council was involved and supportive of this, you know, knowing that we've talked about a lot of things throughout this time of a three-story and some potential lots and businesses downstairs, you know, on the on the first floor. But really, what what the city's looking for, and as we looked at the size of the property from Jackson down to where we have now at the marketplace, and then you block off the parking lot, realistically, two parcels is about all you're going to get in there. It'll be a decent-sized building for both, you know, for potentially two developers unless they come back and want the whole thing. But we wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that so we can help move something along. And that was our top role out of the six, you know, yeah, six projects that potentially we could do. That was probably the most, you know.
Yeah, no bigger than that area is. I could see one developer coming in and doing that whole thing.
We never know, but it just at least getting it sewn, you know, to one parcel right now with a parking lot out of play.
Yeah.
You know, some things like that. Then now, we found out that it's no longer got sewer or anything else there. It was all removed completely. So, you know, there's a lot of, yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to over, I just was trying to fill in a little bit more, Cindy.
And instead of taking the shotgun approach and looking at all several of the properties, it's like, let's be smart, zero in on one and see how we come up with results in in our contacts and focus on one.
Kind of our first approach at doing this, trying to be proactive. And we don't have a ton of money in RDC. We're a little over five hundred thousand. But after, you know, this next year, we're we're getting where that's starting to build. And as the TIF areas build and we get, you know, build that up, we could take on, figure, let's take this first one here. Let's run this one down where you're going to bump your head on the wall many times and get stuff set up. But then we can jump in and help with others and make it more attractive for some developers. Cindy, how many properties are on the list that the city owns?
Five hundred and ninety-four. No.
Just roughly.
I'm just teasing.
Not all the properties.
Well, the the city, we actually, we sold, we sold two this last year, right? We closed.
Yeah, we sold.
Four, one, two, three.
I thought it was four.
Were those joint? Four, four. But we had, what was it, a total of?
These were residential.
Residential, okay, yeah, that's what I'm asking. Yeah. We we come up with a list of ones we felt we could move forward with, and we actually dumped four that can get back into a tax position.
And some of them we want to keep, like down behind your place there. Obviously, we don't want to sell those off so somebody can build a house down there. That's, we want that to be part of the park. So some of them, we didn't consider selling.
Right, okay. But I think that the number was thirty-four.
So I guess.
I think we own thirty-four properties at the time.
But we weren't even looking at all thirty-four properties.
Right.
We were looking at some properties that we don't own that, you know, may become available. And let's get our feet wet and see what the process is going to look like so we're not standing there, you know, twiddling our thumbs when people want to move and we're not ready.
I will tell you, Cindy, I kind of ran through on Main Street up here, a lot of trouble with the 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 original titles on the on the properties and and the layouts. They were a mess. And and there weren't any, there weren't a lot of surveys that had taken place to where, you know, they could then survey from that point. And all of, I mean, some of these, some of these descriptions on these properties are like, well, there's a fence row and there's an oak tree. And 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 I guarantee you're going to have some problems with neighbors when you're going through this process. So allocating money for the survey is going to be important.
Yeah, which we do have that included into it. But, you know, I mean, we we brought, Brian brought up several things and him being in real estate. And, you know, I give Brian a lot of credit because I really think he's helped bring in, you know, a lot of stuff, you know, when it comes to tract supply, when it comes to Taco Bell, a couple of other things like that. I think he's helped out a lot. But, you know, you look out there at the town and the town growth, there's lots of property out there on that side of town coming in that could be very, very attractive. We could grow on. But we don't own right now. Taking a big leap if we had more debt money and buying that and getting it ready because the lines, I don't know why, my wife asked me today who does all the survey, and I was trying to explain that to her. There's not, there's not good records there. When you go back to Trace Beacon and you go Trace Fountain County and everything else. So getting those things to where if a developer runs into those type of issues and it could be big headaches and lose us a deal, where if we can do it shovel-ready and have those things done and get surveys, then, you know, we don't want to run off any developers that's got some some money in their pockets that maybe want to do something.
And I was wondering, what what is the process or the status of like the water and sewer downtown on that?
I wish Eric was here because he could answer that question. I, it it pained me when you said that it wasn't there because I would have thought that it was readily available within that area right there.
Basically, it is there, just like they pulled, they shut the gas and pulled everything out for that meter, you know, everything that was there on that that was right beside Jackson when they were doing the construction. The water, the sewer stuff there, it wouldn't be a huge expense to tie in to the city's existing infrastructure that's there. So I don't know that it's something the the city would, we could do as, you know.
I I just, I just don't want to have to be digging up what we just put in.
Well, and that's, that's, that's a big issue, that some things weren't thought about, that there's new sidewalks and some things that would, that would have to happen. I will just tell you, they took it out, and there's going to be some stuff that's going to have to be pulled out and done again.
But that could be part of the.
Part of the redevelopment. Part of the redevelopment, you know, it's just stuff, yeah. Unless they get bored through, I I've been, they had a lot of stuff that's right there on Perry Street. And then you've got some stuff along Jackson. And then you've got stuff that typically you wouldn't tie in going up to Brady. So you would try to go with, you know, everything. It's there, but I think that there would definitely be some tunneling or something with some of the new sidewalks and some things that would be done. I don't know why they pulled it off.
Well, I'm thinking with the new requirements for, because I know I, when I spoke with Eric last year, just about the requirements for the lead and how changes, these, a lot of pipes are going to have to be redone, you know. And so I was thinking, you know, half hole, that, oh, maybe they didn't do everything because they were waiting to put that in in that whole project of replacing sewer lines and water lines. I don't think that's what happened, but.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to.
We'll go with that, Cindy.
But I guess not having, you know, anything, but is that something that, and I, I'm on both sides, but is that something the city's supportive of, of us utilizing some of our RDC money to try to get that shovel-ready for that corner and get everything re-zoned, you know, not re-zoned, it's all zoned the way it would be, but getting surveys done, getting some drawings for everybody to look at.
I think anything you can hand a contractor or developer when they come in and say, here's what we got, you're a step ahead.
That was, that was our thoughts, something that would have it, you know, where we could have things done and.
I would be supportive of it.
John, for your benefit too, the, the, this budget that we're talking about, the council really doesn't have access to it. Or they want to take money out. Well, let's just.
It's TIF money, right? And this is TIF money?
Yes.
Okay.
Redevelopment.
This is redevelopment says this is what we're going to spend the money for. They create the budget. They're the ones that can spend.
It goes off the TIF.
Okay.
Can I make a small suggestion? I don't know if tax abatements were a part of that package, but in quite a few of the towns that we represent is we have a fee to prepare the tax payment paperwork, just because you guys had some, but they're so wonky that they had slopped off and they were still being assessed and like they were all over the place. So we prefer to do them or at least have an attorney do them. Doesn't have to be us. But if you guys do want to offer tax payments and you want our help, is mostly the other accounts that use us for that charge a fee to prepare all of those documents.
To make that part of what the redevelopment commission pays for?
I mean, it could be.
Well, we've got it in the professional fees. We've got a line item for a professional.
I just didn't know because if you wanted to offer tax payments, but that's what you might pass an ordinance.
We typically don't like to offer, but then they come back wanting it.
They're going to ask.
They're going to ask.
That's a given.
But we we allocate like fifty thousand a year for those type of things. And there's been a lot of times where we're setting up the budget and not using it. Because we're not, we've not had hardly anything there. But now it's growing where we can hopefully take on a project and do something.
I'm just saying, if the city was interested in charging that fee, even if the redevelopment commission covered it, then there should be an ordinance saying what that fee is. So you have something to.
And it sounds like to me that that makes sense to have that as part of a shovel-ready.
Right.
Um, project.
Because it takes two months to run through. You need two city council meetings before that's ready to go with no objections or anything like that.
Okay. Well, to me, it sounds like we need to, in the two hundred block, there needs to be some decisions made on, is there one parcel, two parcels, three parcels? And then, you know, kind of, you have the three buckets or two buckets, and then you can start throwing your expenses in each one of those and and kind of go from there. I think it's a little easier to define instead of having, you know, just one parcel or what, and maybe it will be just one parcel. But if there's a way that we could have a baseline to to talk from, right? So, okay, so now we know we're two parcels or whatever it is. And then put some values associated with it.
Well, what Ingrid's talking about, though, is is irrelevant to how many buckets we have. I mean, if a hundred buckets are one.
Right.
You you still got to have that ordinance.
The ordinance, right.
I I guess the question before us right now is, do we want to move forward with setting up an ordinance to to request that those be paid?
Is that, is that necessary if that's an expense that comes out of the redevelopment commission? Does it have to, does the city have to do an ordinance on that since they don't have any control over that expenditure?
But it's their pro, it's their property, it's the city of Atticus property, though. That's why it's a partnership with us.
So Attica would assess the fine and then the redevelopment commission, or not the fine, the fee, and then the redevelopment commission would pay it.
So would there be a scale fee for like a residential versus commercial? Would there be a different?
Not really.
Usually abatements on residential.
Not, so, yeah, there's not usually abatements on residential. There's usually personal property and then real property. What I'm used to seeing is so like, I'll use Interstate Metals in West Lebanon just built the building after it burned down. And so they had a real property one, and then for all of their equipment, they had a personal property. So I'm used to seeing a real property and a personal property in conjunction, and that's a little bit different than one or the other. So, and I mean, you can table, you have to make a decision tonight, but just something to think of is just having that fee fixed because.
That's a good idea.
It's about what it is, and a bunch of other towns have that already.
Maybe it takes a couple of months to get.
And I, I guess, what we're prepared, what we're hoping is by the next council meeting, you know, we're going to have some activity and stuff. But I agree with John. I mean, if you look at it right now, there's four properties just like the businesses used to be down there that go all the way back. And now this has all changed where we got parking lot back there that we're not going to affect. So determining what, you know, what we're looking for. Do we want one developer for the whole length? Do we want two? You know, what do we want to do? Those are decisions.
Having like four separate ones and then looking at, what if you had a two or what if, not just one large one.
But then we talked about it, and the one after Napa was so narrow that it wouldn't be developable, so we talked about maybe doing two. But that's a decision for, you know, what your guys' thoughts are. And definitely, if we're going to spend, you know, extend the money out to get it surveyed and get everything redone, you know, having one, having two or something like that, that's something we'd love for your.
Is it incrementally more expensive to have three over two or two over one?
I think that's why we're going to come back at our next meeting because we're just now trying to contact people to get that information.
Okay.
Because we don't have.
You see what I'm asking.
Yes, absolutely.
Because your 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 survey is probably going to cost more to do three lots rather than two lots rather than one lot.
And we don't have, we're hoping to have more answers for you. Just want to kind of give you an update of what we're doing, what we're hoping to do. And if you guys are supportive, wanting to move forward, and before we start spending money, we're we're doing our research and doing.
I think that's a lot of ideas.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's great.
I agree.
But it sounds like you need another month, though.
Oh, no, we've got all these things out. We've got updates.
We did Matt last Thursday.
But no, that's, you know, I didn't even think about it. But we don't, everything's still the same down there. We get property across from the marketplace separately. We've still got a little bit slim coffee there in the middle, but it's a separate parcel and goes all the way through the parking lot.
There's one thing I wanted to mention. I was kind of hoping to hear from the different department heads and stuff like that, but could we ask them to do a a twenty twenty-five kind of look see, look forward kind of thing and come in? Because, you know, for me, you guys have been here for a year, you're doing it, you know, so you get the reports and stuff like that. But can they come in and just do like a, kind of like a, an overview for twenty twenty-five and how they see it? Because that would educate me really fast on, you know, bring me up to speed, you know, kind of like, just in general, talking about their their budget and major initiatives that they have. Because inevitably, they're going to come in and ask for money. They're going to ask for approvals to do things. And if they could kind of like, okay, tell us what they're going to do, and then when they come in, they're.
I get what you're asking. Their budget is already set. And and we've already approved that. So they don't need to ask us to spend it.
Okay.
The, this council sets the budget, actually approves the budget, and we set policy. I say we, because I've been on the council for so long. But beyond that, we don't really have a dog in the fight as long as they're spending money that's already. But beyond that, we don't really have a dog in the fight as long as they're spending money that's already budgeted.
Okay.
So, but, but I understand what you're saying and I meet with, with the department heads bi-weekly. That was one of the first things I did was set up bi-weekly meetings with them.
So turn the wheel every day kind of thing.
So, so I, I, I do meet with them, but, but I can bring that up and say, hey, could you come up with a little forecast of what you're looking to do looking ahead? And I can do that.
That'd be cool. I mean, just for me, because it's just anything they offer up is.
Well, it'd be useful for all of us.
Yeah, it's more than what I know, you know, so.
Yeah, but, but I can, I can ask that. Dwayne, you look like you're getting ready to say something.
No, when we get to the miscellaneous business, I just had a question, that's all.
Okay, let's go to miscellaneous business. The only thing that's there is the next council meeting.
Well, I, I heard something mentioned about the police on their comp time and overtime. Can you explain how that works again? Because I, I just want, I thought we had originally passed where once it gets to so many hours comp time, we just pay it out so it doesn't milk way up.
Who are you speaking to, me or the mayor?
I have, I have not had that conversation with Gary.
We beat this up a few years ago and then it came up. But you can't double dip, I mean, you can't pay them overtime and then also have comp time, it's.
They, they make an election, one or the other.
Right, once a year, we made that choice where at the beginning of the year, they make a choice whether they're going to do comp time or.
Right, right. But they can't, they can only get so many hours comp time or they have to be paid.
Right, correct.
But they're supposed to be trying to get rid of it, but.
And you are, and you are correct. They have to make a decision for the final by, like before December or something, so it can be a fall in this year. Thanks for what we did.
I just thought that'd be a good refresher because we had to talk about it a long time.
Yeah, you're right. That's, that's something that I haven't even had to deal with. They've been keeping it down.
Yeah, nuts.
And, you know, for, for years, that was a huge issue.
Oh, gosh, I remember.
And we wrote some big checks, if you remember right.
Yep.
Probably even before your time, we wrote some big checks.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up and, and I'll, I'll dig into that a little bit more.
Thanks. I, I, it just, actually somebody texted me and asked me, because I was watching the meeting. And I thought, you're right, because I remember when we talked about that at meetings ago.
Right. And they've been keeping it down.
Yeah.
And, you know, you signed off on those, the pay sheets.
Yep.
It's all on there, but it's been, it's been pretty well under control.
Good.
Well, and I think we've had this, you know, last couple of years, you've had maternity leaves, you've had different things like that. We were short officers where I know the chief was pulling a lot of overtime, but hopefully we, we got lucky and got Alvin back in the academy. So chief was able to work that out, so he should be, he's all done with phase one, phase two. So as soon as he graduates the academy, he'll be full-fledged. So we, we could be.
I think we've got another employee maybe coming soon that won't have to go to the academy, so that would be a good thing.
That would be.
Don't we get into?
Well, we did testing for the non-transfer on Saturday. That was for their physical fitness test and everything else and the written test. But, yeah, we've got four potential transfer from other agencies that are already academy graduates, everything.
And I've got to say that has never happened since I've been sitting at this table.
Never.
Never.
Never, never, never.
And, and I am so happy to hear that, you know, it's always been the other direction.
We're always a stepping stone.
We'd send them to the academy and they'd leave right after.
Well, that's, that's a good, I mean, that just says what all, you know.
We've come a long way.
Everything, you know, to have four potential certified trained officers that can come and, you know, start, you know, basically right away, that's, that's great.
Do you ladies have anything else for us tonight? Either one of you?
No.
No?
We were talking about how I pull up to basketball practice on Saturday and there's like seven or eight comp cards and I was like, okay.
We were hoping to be out there before you guys started.
Oh, that's where you did that, was that?
Yeah, we did inside because we were going to do the physical fitness testing with the.
And they can go outside, right?
You start thinking of every bad thing you've ever done and you're like.
Are they here for me? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Motion is second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.